Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, March 11th, 2021. Welcome everyone. At this time, I'd like to welcome Pastor David Knight from Bethel Baptist Church. Come on down, sir. Welcome back.
Shall we stand as we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this incredible area that you've allowed us to live in. And Father, right now, I, you know that I'm thankful for the road that's just been completed. And, Lord, it seems like with politics, there's so many things that we can disagree on, but we just want to rejoice tonight for infrastructure, that we can all just say, "That's great. We're thankful." And Father, thankful, Father, thank you for the people behind me, the work that they put in, not always easy. And we ask that you would bless them, strengthen them. And Father, you know what's on the docket tonight and all that needs to be covered. I pray that everything would reflect loving our neighbor as ourself. And Father, we will just give you all the glory as you continue to bless this community. We thank you so much. In Jesus' name, amen. Let's remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, sir. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Heppertly?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Present.
Mayor Polguda?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We're gonna change things up a little bit. We're skipping number five right now. We're gonna jump right to council. Comments and communications. We start on the end. Councilwoman Kinsinger?
No comments tonight.
Councilwoman?
I'm good.
Vice Mayor?
The only thing I have is to invite everybody to walk with me, be drug-free. It's a Map Force event. It's big fun. It's a free event. One mile, family fun run, Saturday, March 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Mortimer Farms. And there'll be hot chocolate and kids activities, no registrations required, family, free family event. So put on your tennis shoes and come join us on March 27th at 10:00 a.m. at Mortimer Farms.
Thanks, ma'am. Councilwoman?
I'd like to invite everybody to come to the brand-new, spanking-new Viewpoint Drive that just opened up this afternoon at a ribbon-cutting, and it's a beautiful road, and we're so very, very grateful to have it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move right on to item seven, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately for discussion and possible action.
I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, but, Thadoma, I would like to remove on page six of 13 of the regular minutes of the 25th of February, I'd like to remove sentence, the full first, the full sentence in line 17 on page six.
With that being said, can I have a second for that?
One second.
Clerk, please call the vote. It would help if I was logged in, ma'am, so you're gonna have to go voice.
Mayor Polguda?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on, item eight, old business, zoning map change, ZMC 19-009, Granville Unit 15 and 16 residential. This will be the second reading.
Ordinance number 884, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, ZMC 19-009, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located northeast of the northeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Santa Fe Loop Road in a portion of Section 3, Township 14 North, range 1 West, and approximately six acres located at the southeast and southwest corners of Tuscany Way and Santa Fe Loop Road in a portion of Section 10, Township 14 North, range 1 West, of the Gill and Salt River Basin Meridian, Yabupi County, Arizona, from PLPAD, Public Lands Planned Area Development, to R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, and C1PAD, Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services Planned Area Development, to R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development. And approving that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 8B, zoning map change, ZMC 19-010, Granville Unit 15, commercial, second reading. Clerk?
Ordinance number 885, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 19-10, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located at the northeast corner of Glassford Hill Road and Santa Fe Loop Road in a portion of Sections 3 and 10, Township 14 North, range 1 West of the Gill and Salt River Basin Meridian, Yabupi County, Arizona, from R1L10PAD, Residential Single Family Limited Planned Area Development, to C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
Council, that passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 8C, zoning map change, ZMC 20-006, viewpoint two, senior community, second reading. Clerk?
Ordinance number 886, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 20-006, by changing the zoning classification of an approximately two-acre site located south of the southeast corner of Viewpoint Drive and Long Look Drive in a portion of Section 14, Township 14 North, range 1 West of the Gill and Salt River Basin Meridian, Yabupi County, Arizona, from R2-2PAD, Residential Multiple Dwelling Units Planned Area Development, to R2-1PAD, Residential Multiple Dwelling Units Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you, clerk. Shall this ordinance pass?
And that passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. And we're gonna switch things up a little bit, so just hang tight. We're gonna jump over to item five now, Chamber of Commerce presentation. Welcome, sir.
Thanks for jumping around for us tonight. My name is Brady. I'm here with the Prescott Valley Chamber of Commerce. And as always, I am here to celebrate the business community and entrepreneurialism in Prescott Valley and then around our community. Tonight, I am here to introduce a brand-new chamber member. This is Drew Deener of Deener Law.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Drew Deener. I am the owner of Deener Law, PLLC. We're located in Prescott, but we have many clients here in Prescott Valley. So we think of ourselves as members of the greater Prescott, Prescott Valley community. Happy to be involved with the Chamber of Commerce, value my relationships that I have here in Prescott Valley. We do estate planning, family law, and probate, as well as advising small businesses on various matters as well. I'm happy to be here tonight and look forward to growing my business in Prescott Valley.
Great, sir. And if someone was to get ahold of you, they would reach out?
Yeah, they could reach out to me. You could find me on the internet at Deener-Law.com, just like it, spelled just like it sounds, right? D is in Dallas, I, E is in Nancy, E-R-Law.com. My phone number is 928-327-5008, 928-327-5008.
Well, thank you, sir, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brady.
Thanks, guys. And if I may, on behalf of the chamber, we are in the middle of, like, planning for our spring and summer events. I just want to say how absolutely excited we are to be planning for those things and to have the go-ahead from y'all. Prescott Valley Days is gonna rock this year.
Nice. Glad to hear it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, folks, moving on, item, item 9A, appointment of Brianna King to the Board of Adjustments. I believe Vice Mayor will be taking this. Ms. King, would you please come on down?
So while Bree's coming here, we had one position on the Board of Adjustments become open when Commissioner Sandy Griffiths submitted her resignation due to her appointment to Planning and Zoning Commission. The vacancy was advertised, three applicants were received. Myself and councilmembers Packard and Kinsinger were in the interview, and now we are recommending the appointment of Brianna King. She is very qualified. She has experience with cities and also experience with code enforcement, and so we were happy to offer her the position.
Nice. Ms. King, you have a few words?
Yes, I do. Thank you for having me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmen and women. Thank you so much for your service. Great to see you guys. You're very close together. It's different for me. Do you feel good? Back in, back to normal?
Yeah.
Awesome. So I'm gonna make this quick, but I do have three things I want to say. I want to say some thank-yous. I want to talk briefly about my experience for those who haven't had the opportunity to get to know me and what I do. And then I want to let you know something a little bit more personal to who I am. First, and my thank-yous are gonna go to first and foremost, Jesus. Without Him as my Lord and Savior, I wouldn't be here and have crossed your guys' path, so wanted to start there. I'm gonna thank my mom, because anytime, you know, you're in front of a commission or, you know, Board of People, I've always wanted to thank my mom. So, hi, Mom. She's alive. You're awesome. She's been an inspiration to me and's always kind of just kept me motivated and pushing forward and let me know that I can do anything that I want. And then I'm gonna thank a gentleman by the name of Greg Gu. And I'm sure none of you know who Mr. Greg Gu is. Mr. Greg Gu is a deputy city attorney that works for the city of Riverside. And he was my mentor when I was in law school. And he taught me everything about how a city was run in that city there, which brings me to my second point, my experience. He let me know about all the different commissions. We went out with code enforcement. We did analyzing of these codes and how they work and did different memorandums and research with first responders. There's a lot more that goes into running a town than meets the eye of most of the citizens and the constituents. And so thank you for all of the people that help you guys, you know, in the background. They're very, very important. And then the last thing I want to tell you guys, something about me personally, is that I have a servant heart. And I've been like that ever since I was a little girl. I am the most happy when I am giving back to my community. I started when I was really young. I continued that through college, worked with foster kids, Surf Rider Foundation, Braille Institute. And now I'm having the opportunity to give back to my city now. So this position for me is a great organic fit, because I have the experience necessary, and it also gives me the opportunity to give back. So I think it's gonna be a great ride. I'm happy to be doing it with you all. If there's anything I can do to help you out, just let me know, and I'm, I'm open to any questions if you'd like.
Thank you, ma'am. It's no wonder you were selected for this position. So I appreciate you stepping up and wanting to be a part of this. So it's exciting.
So, Bree, thank you so much, too. She actually facilitated one of our goals yesterday at our fentanyl, illegal fentanyl meeting yesterday, and she did a fabulous job. So thank you. You are getting very involved. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bree King to the Board of Adjustments to a term with a renewal date of January 31st, 2024.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Moving on to item 9B, Mountain Valley Park restroom construction, bid CIP number P487. Bobby? And the lovely Casey? We're gonna get a bathroom PowerPoint?
Give you a little more info.
All right.
I know nothing about bathrooms, so Robert Kirin, my deputy director, will be here to help me through this. Bobby?
I just wanted to make sure that if you guys had any questions for us pertaining to the new restroom going in at Mountain Valley, we could answer those for you and also ask you to approve the contract for Kroll contracting, as well as the budget transfer for contingency funding on this job.
This, uh, this, this is basically long overdue, in my opinion. It's something that we, I mean, you think of it as just a bathroom. It's not a big deal. But this is a bathroom. It's a 20-foot ceiling bathroom. And for those of you out there that have children and you go to take your kids to the park and you want to send them to the bathroom, you kind of want it to be like a welcoming situation. I know people are chuckling, but it's seriously
Not like a cave either.
You don't want it to be like that. And with the added events that we've been having at our parks, with the youth sports tourism that we've been promoting, people judge a community or judge a park off of its bathroom, believe it or not. So it's just exciting that we have this, and it's just great. Yeah.
Perfect. Councilman, do you have anything? Councilman?
This is in addition to the bathroom that's there, correct?
It is, yes, ma'am. So yeah, this one will be going quite close to the other one, but it'll just be three times larger.
Perfect. I was at the unofficial Fourth of July that we had this past summer, and I think because it was unofficial, there wasn't any porta-johns or anything, and the bathroom situation got dire.
Yeah. Even with the porta-johns, we have a great Fourth of July, so making sure that we have enough facilities for people, trying to make that happen.
Perfect. Thank you.
No, it's terrific. So with that all being said, I mean, can we get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor. A motion to award the bid to and approve the related contract with Kroll Contractors for the Mountain Valley Park restroom construction in the amount of $524,000 by electronic, oh, and approve the related budget transfer by electronic vote. Thank you.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Staying with the same theme, kind of, 9C, salt chlorine generator system, contract CIP number P488.
Yes, sir. No PowerPoint on this one, because that one's kind of tough to throw up on a board. The pool has been in dire need of a new chlorinating system for a number of years now. With the council recommending the approval of a contract with Leslie's Pool Supply, we'll be able to get a new salt cell system, so we'll still be on the same soft-water type of system that we have currently, but one that actually works, and be able to put a UV secondary system on it as well. So then we're within code and also be able to kill cryptosporidium if that bacteria was able, ever able to get into our water. So wanted to ask for your approval on that as well and answer any questions you may have.
Again, obviously, this is something that's so important to our community. It's located in an area that many of the children in Unit 5 and off Robert Road, they attend our pools.
Yes, sir.
And I'm committed 100%, and so is this council, to just doing what we can to make it a better, enjoyable environment for our families, so.
Thank you.
It's just good.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
Motion to approve the salt cell chlorine, chlorine generating system contract with Leslie Pool Supply in the amount of $86,340.84 and approve the related budget transfer by electronic vote.
Count a second.
A second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
Mayor Polguda? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, council.
Thanks, guys. Item 9D, agreement for prosecution software license, Criminal Division, Town and Legal Department. Ivan, will you be taking this?
Mr. Mayor and council, you know, probably the best part of the whole legal department is the prosecutor division. They do most of the work. They spend a lot of time working with the court, with the police department. I hear them in there constantly going through cases and dealing with all of the ups and downs that are involved with that. And they have a software system that we've used for over a decade now. However, about a year ago, the software company told us that they were no longer going to support the software and that we were gonna have to upgrade. Well, the upgrade was gonna cost us more than we had. So we've now gone out and looked for a new software system and believe we've found one. And so we're looking forward to working with Legal Edge and getting a new software system, we hope, installed and trained on by, well, probably about September. But we'd like to go ahead and sign the agreement with those folks and get started.
Excellent. We have any questions for Mr. Legler? We agreed if anything's 10 years old, especially in technology, it's certainly time to change things up. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Motion to approve an agreement with Legal Edge for a five-year license that includes installation and maintenance of a new prosecution software package for the Criminal Division of the Legal Department in the amount of $15,000 per year by electronic vote.
I'd like to second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you. Item 9E, annual street maintenance, installation, hot melt, crack seal award, submitted by Mr. Norm Davis.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and council. This may look a little familiar to you. I come to you in the fall and the spring to talk about our annual pavement maintenance program. What you have before you is the labor award to put in the crack seal material. Here, a month ago at council, by consent, we awarded the crack seal material purchase. You can see there, there's the two truckloads of crack seal that we're, that we ordered, about $40,000 worth. It's about 40 tons, and you can see it's about 800 boxes of the crack seal. Councilman, recall, last fall, we actually gave you a little sample, but this is the current crack seal program for the spring. What it does is it tunes up the roads that have cracks in them prior to the chip seal. It'll be deformed this summer. So we do a fall program. This is our spring program. Some of the major roads, you see Robert, Navajo, Stoner's Drive, and then some of the residential streets in Quillwood. So we'll make sure that we get this out in the media and advise residents prior to the particular work being performed. As you can see, that's in advance of our maintenance program and chip seal, so those roads are listed on here. Just like to always tie it all together, but that's what we're going to do with the particular award. And once again, here is what we pass out to residents ahead of time to advise them of the work that we're being done. So aggregately, there's about $100,000 worth of crack seal work. And what the item you have before you tonight is the competitive bidding that went on for the labor to install the crack seals you saw that we ordered under state contract. And we have CBJ Asphalt is the low bidder at $65,700. We've worked quite a bit with them in the past. It's kind of routine business for us. So we got a very good price from them. We're looking forward to them starting here in a week and doing this crack seal work on streets in advance of the chip seal maintenance this summer. Be happy to answer your questions you have.
Normal, will we be diverting any traffic to our new viewpoint extension when we do Robert Road, or is that not necessary when you do Robert Road?
Not necessarily with the extra lanes out there. They'll do one interior lane, so we really don't see much delay at all.
Gotcha.
So no, won't be necessary to delay any traffic.
Good to know.
But actually during the chip seal this summer, that will be a nice alternative, just more convenient. They both work very fast, they're moving operation. So not much delay to traffic.
Right. Council, we have anything else for Mr. Davis?
So, Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Motion to award the bid and enter a contract for installation of hot melt crack seal materials for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 to the low bidder, CBJ Asphalt and Concrete Contractors LLC in the amount of $65,700 by electronic vote.
I second.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item 10, comments from the public. Consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. At the conclusion of the unscheduled comments, individual members of the council may respond to the item addressed at the discretion of the mayor, or they may ask that the town manager to review the matter or ask that the matter be placed on a future agenda. So at this time, folks, this is your opportunity to be heard, and I believe the clerk may have some names to call.
I have two submitted speaker comment cards. I'm gonna call on Raylene Gosny.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Raylene Gosny. Natural rights and civil rights have absolutely nothing to do with the establishment's support or management of government. The law, our rights, were laid down prior to instituting government. We have a Declaration of Rights, a Bill of Rights. That is, the law and government was instituted to secure those Declaration of God-given rights. The legislature does not make law after we, the people, create a government. The government was created to secure our rights. How do we know we have a tyrannical government subjugating the people's will? And when any body of government violently or absurd And when any body of government violate or assert your rights laid down in the Constitution, tyrannical government only allow information to be expressed that they believe we should know. This council and school board suppresses information from being released to the public they think we do not need to know because it goes against their tyrannical beliefs. In other words, they know what is best for us, so they will fully suppress the information. That is called Nazism, not a republican form of government, and it is a conduct of tyrants. We have the right to share any information in this public meeting to the people as laid down in the Arizona Constitution, Article Two, Section Two, and Five, and in our First Amendment rights. This council and Humboldt School Board only allow information shared they agree with. That is called censorship and communism, and they use Gestapo tactics to stop the factual evidence of information. Do you know we have two presidents in eighteen sixty-one, Lincoln and Davis? We have two presidents right now, one Trump, who stepped aside to let military take over and investigate the massive election fraud as outlined in his Election Executive Order of 2018. The Radcliffe DNI report said there was foreign interference, especially in the District of Columbia and China. Our representatives across the nation, mainly in the House, Senate, and Supreme Court, refused to investigate the massive election fraud presented to the Arizona, Georgia, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, and Minnesota legislatures. That's called treason. Ninety-three senators and most of the House committed treason by ignoring our requests to review the massive election fraud information presented to them prior to certifying F O Joe. They are under military investigation. In our last election, D C Secretary of State Hobbs, the Mariccon County Board suppressed evidence of massive election fraud information that's conduct of tyrants. D C certified the Electoral College the same day that ten hours of evidence of massive election fraud was presented to the part of the Arizona Legislature. No one voted for Kelly McSally as a rhino who stepped down without looking at the massive election fraud of Maricopa County Board. How many know four or five will be going to prison? It is a crime to violate our rights punishable by a fine and up to ten years in prison. We can file criminal and civil complaints in court after the legislature investigates the allegations. Victims can be compensated and asked for relief by asking for resignations. I only have a few more seconds.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Actually, that's it.
That was it?
Thank you.
You still have a few seconds if you want to-
Okay. This is about, my sister requested to have a thirty-minute presentation, and the board said that we did not have to give her her First Amendment rights to have this, to give the thirty-minute presentation, so that is why I'm stating these claims.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. Clerk?
Steve Carros?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I apologize, I did not bring the minutes from February twenty-fifth. If the items that Vice Mayor Hunt withdrew from the minutes, if those are the ones I had objected to, then I will withdraw my request for amendment. So within my comments here in the public section, I would like to reflect upon and counter statements made by a council member at the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting. I quote her statements as reflected in the minutes. Councilwoman April Heppertly wanted to clarify that the annexation is not a blank check to the development of the property. She commented, "It is a simple change going from county to town designation. If the town does not annex the land, there is no control over what could be developed there. Someone could simply come in and rezone the area to industrial. At that point, we would not be able to do anything. Likewise, if someone developed the land for residential use, property owners would be exempt from following water regulations for having private wells." The idea that it is simple change going from county to town designation, it's anything but simple. The idea that there is no control over what could be developed there is inaccurate, as Yabupai County maintains much tighter restrictions than does the town of Prescott Valley. Primarily, the maximum number of homes currently allowed in that general area is one home per two acres, while the town has been known to allow a whopping three to four per a single acre, which is an eightfold increase. The council member's comment is also in direct contradiction to statements made by our former town manager at the April ninth, twenty twenty council meeting, where he stated during a discussion regarding at-risk grading, "We don't hold builder developers to the regulations like others around us do." Yet my biggest concern is that these comments appear to reveal a predisposition and a predetermination of this council to cater to developers to whom we owe nothing, rather than to the citizen residents, the pronghorn, the night skies, the long views, and our most precious resource, water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No.
Because this is a new process, folks, if you didn't fill out a form yet, you can still come on up and speak if you'd like.
If I may, I have a-
No one else? All right, at this opportunity, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
The gentleman didn't get a pink slip, is what I was going to say.
Oh, who's that?
In the back, Don Frasier. He needed a pink slip to speak.
Okay. Sir, would you like to say a few words? Welcome, sir. Hang on a second. Wait until you get to the microphone, sir.
My name is Don Frasier. I'm a resident of Sun Gate Senior Community right down the street here. Anyways, I would like to make a suggestion to the city council and that they might provide a recycle bin in a commutable area that everybody could use, because it really pains me to put plastics in the trash all the time. Not that my landlords would be able to pay for one themselves. I would like to see a commutable thing be put for the whole city of, or the town of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming out. What's your dog's name?
The mayor asked you what your dog's name-
I just asked what your dog's name is, sir. I just asked what your dog's name is. Your dog? His name?
Boo.
Boo? Fair enough. Welcome. All right, now if there's nothing else, then I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
I second. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming out, everyone. Drive safe. Be careful out there.